Oh, look at that.
All right, so it's after five thirty, we need to call to order. And first, um, is there any public comments? Okay.
Sorry, public comment on the one?
Anyone here, anybody?
Uh. Also, you folks online, can hear.
I have no public comment. Thank you.
In that case, first order, this is trustee's oath of office for the three newly elected, two newly elected and our re-elected trustee. Um, we all have our oath of office in front of us, so I'll read it, you'll repeat, and then you get to sign. And be officers, trustees. I just always swear.
I just always swear.
Then I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And then I will faithfully discharge.
And then I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the Office of Trustee of the Troy Public Library.
The duties of the Office of Trustee of Troy Public.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Who was that? I filled my pocket. Who coughed?
That was me. Evelyn, um, Keith, I just want to say very quickly, um, thank you both so much for your service. Um, Evelyn, I especially would like to acknowledge, um, the fact that you, um, were a committed presence to this board, um, for the past twelve years. Um, and your service is invaluable, um, and uh, we will continue to oversee our beloved institution with the same care and thoroughness, um, that you bring to it. Um, in every aspect, so thank you so much. All right, um, going through the agenda, okay, as the, um, Chair of the ad hoc nominating committee, um, I uh, will give my report, um, we met briefly last Friday, um, the uh, sorry, I'm a little nervous.
You're so unlike it.
Um, I didn't, I didn't expect, I didn't expect the audience quite frankly.
I feel like a slacker, I had nobody.
Um, we met last Friday, um, and determined that, um, I was throwing my hat, my name in the ring for president. Um, Carolyn Fagan, uh, volunteered to throw herself in for vice president, uh, Marie for treasurer, and what seems to be almost a running gag for this board. Um, nobody, nobody elected to, uh, take on the position of secretary, um, at her nominating committee, um, so we need to do that first, um, but, uh, first, I will say if anyone had any interest in running for the positions that had already had candidates, I welcome that, um, should you feel the desire, um, if not, would anybody like to volunteer to be secretary? I'd be happy to provide my minutes template, et cetera. I watch the YouTube, if I can, I take pretty thorough notes, watch the YouTube recording, I double the speed, so it's usually not too bad. It's very funny to hear certain people's voices, including mine. Anyway.
Anybody who might be interested in becoming an officer in the future, certainly being secretary would be good practice.
I agree, I agree, um, it's an excellent way to intimately understand the operations of our board, um, our bylaws, um, mostly just in the term of keeping track of the things we do and say in this meeting, so. Anyway, I'd be happy to just nominate somebody. Ashley Saw, may I nominate you as secretary of the board? Thank you.
Didn't you see the top line you?
I did, you see, you're looking away.
Can we get him to do an oath of office?
All right.
All right, um, thank you so much, uh.
No, super reluctantly, but it's, it's fine, I will do it.
I'd be, I'd be happy to discuss everything I've done, um, it's, it's truly not that bad.
Yeah.
And are there any other candidates who might be interested?
Yes.
I would, I'm willing, okay, I can do it if you want.
It's also a great way to get to know, like, you get to know what's up.
Like, if you really want a hard boundary, I'm happy to do it, but I don't want.
Okay, I'll do it.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
Just so, just so everybody's aware, all of the, all the officer positions, um, are elected yearly, so have to do it for a year, um. That, that doesn't sound right, but we volunteer to do it for you.
It's nice if you do it, do it, because at times we've kind of thought, maybe we'd end up having Joey do it, and Joey isn't here anymore, so.
And it is, it is a responsibility of, of the, the board and the elected positions, so, so thank you so much for taking on that responsibility. Um, we'll go now to committee compositions, um. I'm probably gonna use shorthand for the, I know our committees have very long names, um, but I think we can start with the building committee. Um, person, are you still interested in serving as chair, or is anyone else interested?
I, I am interested, if both people have it.
Um, who's interested in being on the building committee? By the way.
Who's not interested?
Yes. And finance committee? Uh, Maria is the treasurer, you will still chair that? Um, who was interested in joining that one?
Let, let me say, remember that the finance is a primary responsibility, uh, fiduciary responsibility of, of the board members, whether or not you're on the finance committee.
inherently, and the, the best perspective of it is being on the committee, kind of discussing these things in real time, I know I've learned a lot, um.
Well, because it gets discussed in finance and then doesn't get discussed in the board meetings.
Yeah, of course. So who isn't interested in that one?
I'm sure you're saying either is not.
It's not, it's not.
It's not, obviously.
Damn, I could hook you into it.
Numbers. Some words.
All right, and our last, our last, uh, prescribed committee is the administration committee, um, Dan, are you still interested in chairing that one? Beautiful.
But I don't want to be in the committee.
Chair name on it, um, who is interested in that one?
Wasn't I?
It's fun.
It's like, listen, I'm interested, basically how we dealt with the director.
Are you not interested in admin?
Um, you weren't prior, I mean, you're welcome to, you're welcome to join, so we're gonna have a lot of work.
Also, you know, we've always said that everybody was able to come, even if they weren't officially on the committee.
That's just nice to keep in mind.
I, I have, I think I'd like to see the fiscal policy reviewed, and I know the, so it could be a joint effort, so maybe I should be on the committee.
Sure.
So everyone is on admin. Except for Kirsten's not on admin. She's speaking up there, buddy.
Right, you know what, you. I heard a date, do you want the, I think you do not want.
All right, um. What else? Oh, uh, we have our ad hoc director search committee, um, that's so far has been comprised of the entire board, um. Um, I think at this point, we need to decide, uh, if we're gonna continue to allow non-members onto that committee, um, seeing how Evelyn and Keith have contributed to the process up until now, um. I'm happy to hear their input, especially as we're rounding the bend, we have our last candidate interview on Friday, um.
I would just make a motion that we include Evelyn and Keith on it.
I motion to specifically include, um, Evelyn Katz Greenstein and Keith, J. Keith Slupski, um, onto the director search committee, um, for the duration of the committee's existence, um. Uh, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Thank you very much, see, see everybody on Friday.
Do you have outreach as well?
That comes the other word ahead, but.
Oh.
Yes.
To take all the other ones out, I was thrown off.
There's so many.
Yes, I would still want to be the chair of the outreach and assembly.
Let's go and get to that one next. Slow note taken, um.
Does the chair, chair of the search committee?
I'm like a chair.
I'm a director. Um, so you do the search committee as well as the admin?
Yeah.
Correct.
Thank you.
After Friday.
Friday, you think there's gonna be a decision by Friday?
I would.
Well, it's good for everyone to know that we've sort of made director, search committee, and admin committee of like, kind of morphed together during this process, so they're kind of overlapping, because it's essentially the same.
Yes, and once we, once we spin down, um, the, the real need of the search committee will probably transition more to having a regular scheduled admin meeting again, um, which we were not able to do for the past several months. Um, so we anticipate that happening in November, at least, we will probably have an interim admin committee this meet, this month, definitely, um, to set priorities, so. All right, um, outreach committee, or do, would you like to give a little outreach spiel? You, you and the committee have done, um, a lot of tremendous work.
Yeah, I was gonna do it, I, I thought we were on the agenda for the.
Where it says, uh, survey up them.
Ah, yes, cool, all right.
Is there anybody not interested in being on the outreach committee?
Yeah.
It's not, it's, I'll take ours, all right.
I, I just want to, I'm, I'm.
Okay.
Yes, everybody gets this.
Like you said, take your.
Okay.
All right, I'm not forgetting a committee, am I? We have a lot of committees.
Yeah.
No.
I was just making sure I had the information, so I'll send out a roster, uh, sometime in the next couple of days, everybody knows.
Sounds good, thank you so much. Okay, all right, uh, next thing we have to go to, um, everybody has to uh, acknowledge our conflict, conflict of interest statement, um, a, about thirty minutes ago, I emailed you all the policies for the trip of library. Um, so you're not signing something that you didn't necessarily read, um, it's on page fifteen of our sixteen-page document, um. We're passing it around, I said, I believe I sent it to personally now. My apologies on that one. Um.
Wait, hold it. So there's a specific page that we should read or?
Well, the, sorry, the conflict of interest policy is on page eighteen, all of our, all of our policies are collated.
No, I think sixteen of the, or fifteen of the document we have in front of us here.
Oh, perfect.
Page fifteen is, um, the financial state of the pair.
It was separate.
Oh, sorry, sorry, uh, I sent an email to your personal account.
Thank you.
Just sorry everyone's aware.
Did you CC me on that as well?
I don't think so, but I can, I can forward it to you.
Yeah. Sorry, is this just, it's not just COI, it's all policies?
The document is all the policies.
Okay. All board-specific policies only, or personnel?
I think there, it's a blend of them.
The board are the only one that get to approve policies, everything else is a procedure. So if there's a board packet with everything, that would be it, so there's not a separate policies for the staff.
Yeah.
There is an employee manual, so I guess that would be.
It does say board of trustees, we, thank you.
I'd be happy to take those, if you want. Thank you, Ben.
We normally scan them and record them at the library.
That's a tremendous, tremendously good question, Evelyn, may I ask you to, um, we, I, I assume we keep a copy of these at the library? Okay.
You want to fill them out? Fine.
Thank you.
You need a pen, Mary?
Oh, yeah, so I can. Yeah.
Would you like my phone?
It is what you know, not secretary.
I'm still gonna take notes. Thank you very much.
I don't know if he's legit, could be used red egg.
Didn't you say you're doing the calling?
Listen, actually, actually, it's a beautiful teacher.
Um, next thing on our, uh, just keep things moving along, our transition agenda, um, we had to update the contact sheet with our contact information, um, I don't have that.
I have been looking for it, it must be called something, um, so I will send it out electronically and people can get it back to me.
Yes, I, I was gonna, if you didn't offer, I was gonna offer something very similar.
If I find something, I'll rebuild it, if I can find a hard copy for it, so.
Thank you so much, Christine. All right, um, we'll move on to treasurer's report and approval of expenditures.
The, um, finance committee has recommended that the board approves the bills. Uh-oh, now I have to find out how much they were for. What do you mean?
One, four, three, 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 four, three, three.
Thank you, Keith.
All right.
Will I do without you?
I think it was.
And you can just, I don't know, just in case you wanted to double check. Is there?
Okay, I wrote, I wrote something wrong, I just want to make sure. So it was like a factor of like two thousand dollars, so, it's like, wait, yes, all right. Did not wait, please.
Well, I think maybe you need to say, is there a second?
Sir, second? Sorry.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, yes. Right. In some big bills, small. And thank for the wonderful Masonry work, AGS.
When would you call the special meeting?
We can talk about that, probably new business. All right, um, we have a consent agenda, um. So that includes the approval of the minutes, the meeting held oh, September, um, I wrote the agenda wrong, unless we didn't approve the August.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's all right.
It should say September, huh?
Yeah. So approval of the minutes, the meeting held September tenth, twenty twenty-four, um. We have an administration committee report, uh, director's search committee sub-report to that, um, we have building committee report. We, we have an outreach committee report as well. And we have an upper Hudson report, and a president's report, I just want to make sure we're there. Um. I motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Thank you, um, any discussion? I know you noted I, uh, made a little typo. Hello?
We can modify that motion to be as correct.
Sounds good to me.
But just like I, that's the first one in hell.
I, I have, I have had a pretty good, pretty good, uh, pretty good, pretty good streak, so, I had to end sometime. All right, all, all in favor?
Right.
Motion carries, okay. We'll move on to our regular agenda now, Christine, would you like to take the floor?
I would love to take the floor, so, um, I wanted to start with, uh, library buildings, uh, from the director's report, only because there's some updates to that. Uh, anything in the directors' association, that's the meeting of all the directors at all the libraries at upper Hudson, and so I would just like to give an update on where things are with that, but that's not critical. Kirsten, I didn't know if you wanted to talk about the lamps in particular, I just put in that we might be putting in some additional cement and other things and revamping the ramp so that it's suitable with the door due to the.
So we did meet with, and I apologize, I've not sent out notes and said, in fact, I need to give the email address for the person from the library who represented us there.
Kristen from the library who represented us there, named Lori Dryer?
Yes.
Okay.
And the name of the contractor we met with.
Okay.
Have those pieces.
Okay.
Um, contractor agreed that the ramp as installed did not meet ADA, was prepared to make some modifications to, uh, allow by moving the ramp, well, to meet the ADA, and, uh, as a consequence of that, a couple options how we could address, how they positioned the ramp based on the sidewalk, supposed to where the door is, so we had the option to modify the sidewalk then to work with the new ramp. Um. Uh. There may be another option to modify the ramp assembly to match, to work with the door as well, maybe that's cheaper, we don't know, so we're asking for a price in case that's cheaper than the additional sidewalk. We're weighing some pricing on that before we finalize that, the, based on what we saw in the field, we then made a recommendation that fifty percent of the cost be released to the contractor for the work that they've done and material that they supply to date.
When?
Right, go ahead.
Uh, we write the check for this ramp, so you said fifty percent would be sent to the contractor?
Would be released to, we would recommend that.
With, with the proviso that they, uh, make the amendments that need to be made to make the ramp ADA compliant, right?
Yes, and then.
We have not written check to the contractor.
Kirsten, I assume you're gonna be in contact with the friends about when that.
I can.
We, I, I'm afraid it will be included on the email that summarizes that description of that event.
Thank you.
I've not written that, so I mean, I do need the contact information for where dryer, for the representative from Northeast Mobility.
Um, then, sorry, just a point of clarification, when you're talking about the, um, modifying the sidewalk, um, we're talking about when you immediately go out the door, essentially with the ramp as mounted on right now, the sidewalk, you're, we're installing another square to the south of the existing, or, okay?
Yeah, oh, normally, another three feet wide.
Okay.
Sounds good, um, and the other ramp to the sidewalk, got you.
I'm gonna ask Bob, um, what were the, what was the scope in the contract? Because it's odd if it's Northeast Mobility and they did something without.
I'm sorry, I can't.
So I want to understand what the scope was in the contract, um, did we already look at that? Because it's mobility, Northeast Mobility, which means that they were building a ramp for accessibility, but it wasn't accessible, um, ADA compliant, so why is that something that we're getting charged for on the back end for their error in construction?
Fair question.
Yeah.
Fair question, um, the, we didn't, there's no contract that I'm aware of, there's a proposal that was received, proposal included a sketch showing the, um, proposed configuration of the ramp, there were no dimensions on it, um, but we'll say that it would be ADA. So, um, if they were to have installed the ramp components that are currently on site, um, the ramp would land so that it would not, the bottom of the ramp would meet the sidewalk, but the clearances between the bottom of the ramp and the edge of the sidewalk would not meet ADA, so it's the existing sidewalk that was would not meet the configuration of the ramp components that were available on, as part of the proposal, now. Um, would we possibly get custom components, perhaps, um? We did get two proposals. There were two proposals that were received, uh, for the work, the other proposal was.
Eighteen thousand dollars.
So approximately, yeah, so approximately four thousand dollars more than both were received. Proposals received are based on standard parts that they had available, custom parts might be more, so I, I think that if custom parts have been included to make it meet the bottom of the ramp, perhaps a proposal would have been more, I think we're still I've not yet seen the proposal for the additional side, the sidewalk work, um. I hope that will still be less than the higher proposal I've received.
But as another, I have one question, but go for it, right?
Oh. The money that's paying for the ramp comes from the Troy Savings Bank Foundation and my friends wrote the proposal to the foundation for the ramp the temporary wall, and, um, so that's, that's why we're, and the money came to the friends of the library, so we are the ones, um, uh, responsible for paying the contractor and also the reporting back to the foundation. We had to do a, a interim report that was due the day after the ramp was installed, and one of the questions that they asked in their interim report, and they'll ask again in the final report, no doubt, is what was the impact of this ramp on, uh, the public? And, um, so, as, you know, we're all very concerned about the fact that right now it's not ADA compliant.
Sure, is there, um, is it standard to not have contracts for construction projects, or is that like a, just an off thing that happened here?
They asked the former director.
Okay.
Yes. Things are a bit tenuous when it comes to that.
Okay.
Generally, we have contracts, not sure about item, I mean, because, uh, obviously during the building, we have building contracts, this was something a little bit different, so if we had other things like that, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure, but it was sort of a different animal.
A lot of the work at the Lansingburg branch for that time was an emergency project, um. Desire to reopen as soon as possible, um, we, the director handled a few different contracts to address, uh, some of the immediate needs that were identified, but um, the building committee did not weigh in on those, and, um. It's part of the rest of our active process, I'd almost say.
Yes.
This seems outside of that repair work, though, we can keep going, my question would be the terms of.
Outside the repair work.
Yeah, and is there an invoice, because sometimes the invoice will have terms at the bottom from them?
There is an invoice and is an invoice, yeah.
And there's a proposal.
Okay, all right, just curious, we'll keep going, but I'm curious what that cost is gonna look like and what percent we should be owning, you know? And if it's just the sidewalk? Okay.
Yeah, there should be no additional costs from Northeast Mobility, unless it's less expensive than the sidewalk. In which case, then I think we could have that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
My informal recognition.
However.
Very briefly.
Um, however, the grant from the Savings Bank Foundation was for twenty thousand dollars. And so if there is addition, and uh, what we did with the money that was left over from what the supposed cost of the ramp was going to be is pay for the temporary wall, pay for the mural, and pay for other things at Lansingburg. Given, uh, the success of, uh, uh, the appeal, it would be possible to use the money instead of leftover from the foundation, um, grant. If there needs to be, uh, work done to remediate, um, to make the ramp ADA. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, Fred, I, I think we'll have that discussion once we have an idea of what the scope of work will be going forward.
But it shouldn't accrue to the libraries just. But it shouldn't accrue to the lack of research.
Ideally, thank you. Kirsten, um, I assume, uh, once you get the contact information you need, um, hopefully we can pursue a path forward in that. Sometime this week, um, so, so we keep things going with the ramp project.
I believe, and. I believe that my role in this is prepared minutes on this topic.
Okay.
My understanding, yeah, this is my understanding and that's my understanding if it's different, is that Lori Dryer is following up with, um. The con- the contractor on the cement side. I, someone was mentioned, oh yes, we'll talk with so and so. He always does our work here at Lansingburg. I have no idea who so and so is.
Okay.
May I address that?
Please.
Okay, I just wanna let, hi, I just wanna let you know that that is in process right now. We have not received any estimates yet.
Thank you, Lori. I really appreciate your advancing that.
Yep.
All right, Christian?
Um, next thing on the thing, on the director's report, sorry, not articulating that actually. Um, is, uh, the adjuster, John Ryan, was able to officially contact him, spoke with him today. So, yes, we, uh, have not, well, I can go back to quick response also, has not been paid. So just to let you know, clarify, clarify that point. Um, and then in terms of the claim and what have you, I now have numbers and all the information that I need. According to our insurance company, it has been closed, um, after being declined, I think, was it a couple of times?
Three times.
Three times. Uh, so that's how they're looking at it. He, John Ryan. We need to reopen, get a bunch of information together, so on and so forth. He said that he would contact me early, uh, next week. Anyway, and then, um, anything else, there was some conversation, or actually it was an email from Paul. Asking Mr. Ryan if he could recommend an attorney, and Mr. Ryan had never responded back to Paul, just to let you know. And so he knew that that was something sort of in the works. He has reached out to that attorney. Given the attorney information, but the attorney hasn't said yay or nay in terms of connecting. You know, in terms of the project. So hopefully we can get some kind of answer early in the week and then move forward. So as far as I know, they have all the information they need, all that stuff, um, so.
Thank you so much for tracking that down.
Yeah, no problem.
That was a question that's been up in the air for several months now. I'm glad you were able to talk to Mr. Ryan. Hopefully we can get connected with an attorney and see if we have a real case.
Yes, if not, you know, I don't know if we could, you know, how that works, but you know, obviously we'll do what we can to make sure that this gets resolved as soon as. Possible. Um, I did.
Do we have a bill from quick response? Did they ever send?
No, they never sent it to us.
You don't even know how much?
No, no, exactly. Um, we didn't. So, yeah, they, they know that it was declined, and so it's just hanging out there. And I think they're just waiting for us to do what we need to do. Um, I put in a comment here about, uh, the Lancingburg roof and getting leaves out of the way. Um, due to fall season, so Lori does have a contractor that comes in, uh, to take care of that. So, um.
Sorry, I know, Lori, you're on the line right now. Um, last time I was on. The beloved Lansingburg branch's roof, um, there were no like guards over at the, like, downstairs drains, um.
There are.
There are.
There are guards now, yes.
Glad to hear that. Thank you.
And I was there, what, a couple of months ago, Lori, and so we just cleared some of them out, had sticks and things like that while we were up there.
Excellent.
Yes.
It's been a while since I've been on the roof, so.
Yeah. Uh, abatement is underway in the art gallery. As you guys know from the meeting yesterday, uh, it is complete. We, they've gotten the analysis. They will be dismantling everything tomorrow midday. And, uh, at some point we'll get the reports and whatever it is that we need, obviously the invoice and things like that. So I wanted to give you a, a current update on that bit of information. Um, anything else? The same as before, all the grant information is pretty much the same as before. Do this quickly. Oh, and then the other thing, as I mistyped in terms of the incident, I had misunderstood, um, an email from Lori. Um, sure, uh, the Lansingburg grants did not have an incident, so I will be changing our numbers accordingly. Um, I just had misunderstood an email, so ultimately we only had ten incidents this past month, not that that, um. Means anything, you know, one more or less. Um, but, uh, the important thing to note is that. Uh, we do have a couple of patrons, one that kept coming in repeatedly and for us repeatedly contacting the police. Uh, one of the things that, um, happened was that our affidavit form that, uh, we had pulled together with, uh, police. Um, now if we wanted to have somebody arrested for trespassing, um, the affidavit has to be notarized. So we do have one patron that has a notarized affidavit, and so, um, that's what we have for the time being.
Thank you for the update.
Welcome.
The employee. What steps are taken? So when that one employee was threatened, how was that handled from like a personnel safety perspective? Are they okay? Do they need intervention?
They were asked if they were okay. They said that they were fine being on the desk, um, it, it, um. So, because the, I, the oddness of this was that that particular employee was on the desk. Almost every single time this patron came in, there was no connection. It wasn't that they were coming to see them. It was just coincidental. Uh, to the point of, you know, I won't be here on Friday, I bet you he won't show up, kind of thing, which then he didn't show up. So it was just kind of an interesting. Uh, components, uh, that, uh, employee has some concerns, obviously. Uh, and, uh, has taken some preventive, uh, measures for themselves. Uh, as well as, uh, you know, we're going through the regular process of making sure that everyone is okay when certain things happen and, um. Yeah, we, you know, oftentimes people think that they're okay, but then later they might not be. That hasn't come up specifically in, uh, terms of the incidents that occurred, but it was just sort of the fact that it was like almost every day, every other day. And then at a certain point, it was like, okay, I, I need, you know, to make sure that I'm okay, so.
Well, this is, I know there's, there's so many things going on on your plate specifically, um, with the library in general, um, but I remember, um. We discussed last, last month that Virginia had, uh. Um, stepped down from chairing the safety committee, um, the internal operations, safety committee, um, has that found a new chair at all?
I am the new chair. I tried to pull together, yeah, exactly. So, um. But there are obviously some main concerns that need to be addressed, and so. Um, I haven't gotten my mind around it, whether maybe I should not be chairing it and that maybe someone else should. But at this point, we've just are, uh, have lost several department heads. So, um, it's not one of those things that we can give to someone who's not in a administrative type role, so.
Understood. Thank you.
Last question, is there an EA key program? Okay, perfect. And the staff knows how to access and.
They should, but you know, it's probably a good idea for us to reach out and remind them about that.
Um, and do you have any final words? I know we, uh, jumped over the HVAC grant.
Final words?
Oh, sorry, excuse me, uh, the directors association.
Uh, no, I didn't have anything in particular. I just, I, I will always have that in there, um, and there wasn't really anything critical that. Uh, you know, to my understanding, the grant that we submitted is in, I think the end date was second of October, but. Uh, and maybe I didn't update that in here, I can't recall, but anyway, um, but that was really anything critical for us specifically.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Christian.
You're welcome.
Right, um. Directors report underway, um, I think we'll move on to the next item on our regular agenda, um, the twenty twenty four election debrief. Um, I'm happy to kick that one off. We just had election, obviously, um. Our budget passed with a six to one margin, which I was very pleased to hear. Um, it's nice to see that the. Uh, budget is well supported by the Troy community. That's, um. Almost exactly one percent of the community came out and voted for the budget, so that's cool. Um, I just like statistics like that. Uh, that being said, uh, I have some concerns with the conduct of the election. Um, uh, it's brought to my attention the day of the election, and I communicated this to the board at the time. On that there were issues actually processing ballots of Lansingburg. Um, it seems to have been, from my understanding, the communication with folks up at Lansingburg, um, Kristi Ann. That same day, um, it seems like it was resolved very, very quickly, um, but I do think, uh, we need to. We need to think about who's running our elections and their confidence in doing that, um, because this is something that is critical to our operations, um. If people don't have confidence in our elections, um. I was, I received calls from people who have been voting in this city for fifty years. Um, which is incredible, um, and they were told that they were not, um, registered voters in the city. Um, and I know for a fact that Prince County has not purged, uh, anybody from the rolls. Um, so I would strongly suggest over the course of the next year that we reconsider. Um, how our elections are conducted, who conducts that, um, to, such to just maintain the professionalism. Um, and sanctity of our elections. So, um, I open it up to. The rest of you, if anyone else has any thoughts about the election.
Happy to. So, um, we had a checklist for all the information that we needed for the election. Um, and going through it, realizing where little areas of, uh. Of issues had sort of come up. So, uh, I've made some changes that when we request the information from the city of Troy. They need to put the Excel spreadsheet in alphabetical order. That was the problem. Um, that when people did a search, they thought that was the only person with the last name say Nichols. And really there were more people and they would have to go and keep like searching through and through because it hadn't been alphabetized. So that was sort of like one, you know, glitch number one or what have you. So there are certain steps now that, um. You know, are more specific on what we need, how we need it, so that no one is going to the Excel spreadsheet even to sort it. Because that's gonna create an, an, another situation that could happen, um, that we would want to avoid. So for instance, if you're sorting and you don't do it right, all of a sudden, you know, the top line isn't gonna read, you know, name, address and whatever it might have in there. And then somebody might accidentally delete something, you know, like you just don't want to get into all of that. Um, another thing is, is that we could secure the documents so that it can't be deleted and so on and so forth. So from my vantage point, I was making mental lists and then have gone back and updated that so we don't get into that. Uh, the other issue.
Thank you, thank you for doing that.
No.
It's not even your responsibility, so thank you for, thank you for doing that.
Uh, the other component is that, you know, not having worked with the League of Women Voters, they did do a great job. They were very ethical, they were. But it was one of the things that they're a volunteer organization, having volunteers working on it. So, um, I know now.
Oh, we, we did pay them.
Yes, uh, yes, sorry, but they're, the organization's getting paid, not the people that are there. So, they're, they're volunteers in that regard. So ultimately, uh, recognize that even though we've used them several times. And that some people who are running the, um, groups of people know what they're doing. That we need to set up a time a couple of days beforehand with the data in order going through, not the day of. What have you, because it's just not enough time with everything else that has to be in place. So there's like little things like that that ended up causing. Some issues that we need to resolve. So obviously in Lansingburg, they came across this issue and so they ended up going with the, um. Not preliminary ballot, but the provisional ballot or whatever, because they felt like that's what was needed and then it. That once they sorted it, they realized, oh, that was the issue, which we of course had realized on our end at the same time and so.
Kirsten, you had a comment?
Provision ballot was my question.
Yeah, I also have that question. Um, along with another one, but, oh.
Please go ahead.
Well, I, I mean, you know, I have two questions, I suppose. The first question is. You know, I understand that it is, are, it's folks that are volunteering their time and they're part of an organization. My concern is if they have. Too close of a relationship to our library and are also running the election, that's concerning, um, to me. So, and then to that end, because there are other things that were brought up, um. So they're associated with the library in some way or the friends group in some way, and then they are also. Uh, there as a volunteer to, uh, perform the, like, the duties of, like, handing out ballots.
The League of Women Voters do many elections throughout all the libraries in Upper Hudson. I would imagine if there was an issue, it would have probably come up by now. Just as information, more than anything.
Right.
I mean, they're ordinary citizens, I don't think that some might be members of.
And, okay, so Freda, for instance, is the president of the, uh, Friends Group. And was also running the election. I, that just seems like a conflict, not that I, not that I'm implying that Fred would have been doing anything that was. That it was unethical or something she shouldn't have, that is not what I'm implying, but what I'm implying is the appearance of that, and I think that that is an issue. And I do understand that there are folks who serve other municipalities, and so therefore there is no conflict.
Right.
But I.
I see that, I was not aware.
Thought that was concerning.
Yeah.
Um, and so then I guess my quick follow-up, I understand you want to pop in, um, my, is. What will the process be? Maybe this is at the end of this discussion. What will the process be for us to look at this? Will it be a special meeting? Will it be, will it turn, will it be a committee? Um. Yeah, what, what will it look like for us? What, what, does it already fall into a current committee? Has this ever been done before?
No.
So.
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
Okay, you wanna tackle?
No, I'm done with those real lines, sorry.
So my question would be, did we get anything from the League of Women Voters after this? Because I appreciate that you have takeaways. My question is, do they have takeaways? Because they're the ones that ran it.
Yes, um, so my understanding is that at some point we all get together. I, I haven't heard anything or seen anything yet to go over what worked, what didn't work and all that. My relationship with them obviously only started a little bit ago, and we did have a meeting of, these were some problem areas that they noticed. And whatever, which we mitigated, especially during the, uh, budget presentation and, um. Candidate, you know, meet the candidate, but then of course new issues came up, so I've got my list for that. And so we can certainly go through and, and meet with them and then make sure that our checklist. Has all of the pieces in place and all of that to avoid these kinds of situations.
Um, when that is scheduled, could you please just keep us in the loop?
Yes.
I think several of us would be interested in participating in a dialogue.
Yeah, I mean, actually, maybe we bring them to a board meeting.
Yeah.
You know, the.
I, I just didn't know if there's gonna be debrief sooner than November.
Yeah, um, I know, we're almost there. I, so I think they're done with all of the elections at this point, so. Um, and I don't know how often they meet, but I can cer- I will reach out to them.
I think there's multiple, like, after action things here around, um, kind of a lack of communication and transparency, um. It feels like a lack of training, and then it feels like a conflict of interest. And we need to know that they understand all of those and have thought through them, if there's a consideration for the future. And my question would be, if it wasn't them. Who's the alternative, right? Like, who else would run this?
I talked to Upper Hudson Library and they had, they also indicated that it was something that they wanted to ask. The net, like, the network of other libraries about who's facilitating or what their procedures are, and if there's, like, running.
Right.
For everybody.
Thank you for reaching.
And if someone's doing it well, how are they doing it?
Right, and I could certainly reach out to the directors association, obviously not all libraries, uh, vote. Um, and, and stuff, and then see about bringing all of us together as well and just having a subgroup and, and working through all of that. Because it's real, it's an important component, so, yes.
Thank you so much. But just in the interest of everyone's time, so we can get through the agenda, I'm gonna ask you politely to, uh. Wait for the public comment period at the end of the meeting, so thank you.
Another issue though, um, and I know that Marie had gotten approval from the League of Women Voters, but we really can't have Board of Trustees. While they're counting ballots and stuff, we might want to look at having somebody who's there, who's not. Either staff or trustee, even though she got approval because she wasn't, um, up for election or reelection. Uh, that the reality is that we need to have that component in place as well.
Yes, I think that.
So there's, there was a bunch of like little things that, that certainly affect some things, but we really need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and. Um, you know, again, transparency, ethical, ethicality, is that a word?
Um, does anyone else have any thoughts?
Can we, whenever that thing happens, can we make a, like, distinct recommendation for next year? Because I can see us next year going, wait, what did we say we were gonna do? Can we just like. Have like a little deliverable that we come out of whatever that next thing is with.
I agree.
Best practices. Is that okay?
No, I think that.
At least from the trustee side, because I'm sure you're, you've got your checklist from the library side, from the trustee's side, it'd be great.
I think that's an excellent suggestion. I actually might ask you to.
Happy to do it.
Not gonna help. Um, I did reach out to the, um, East Green Bush Library because they seem to have, um. Um, I did reach out to the, um, East Green Bush Library because they seem to have, um. A distinctly organized, organized way of handling things. Their documents are very distinct. They had the clerk. Um, you know, at the ready that particular evening to sign everything. And, um, so we, I think. You know, should probably consider sort of upping our game on that in, in that way as well.
And that was the issue with timing was the clerk wasn't there to sign the certification.
Yeah, that was my bad. Um, it wasn't on the checklist. Evelyn had brought it to my attention. I completely lost track of it. And then when they asked, I was like. Oh my gosh, you know, and stuff. So we did go to the county clerk. Everything was fine, but you know, that delay and all the other stuff.
Love to hear you not apologize sometime in the years.
I totally will own everything that I, but.
We tasked you with a monumental pile of.
Yeah, it was just, it was like, it was on the checklist. I'm like, you know, if I don't write it down. I mean, I did actually, but it was small.
It was certified less than twelve hours later.
Exactly.
That's why we're a mega list.
Yes. Um, and nobody has any final thoughts. Um, I think we can move on to old and new business. Um, we have, oh, sorry.
No, I don't.
There was something you said you wanted to bring up at the end, but did we cover it?
Yeah, just the process. So I feel understood on what we're, the plan is.
All right. That being said, um, we have one piece of new business. Um, we have our community survey preliminary.
Which actually you guys, I didn't realize you had a new packet. Yeah, no, I would say.
How do we get a packet?
It's on your. It's the last, it's the last.
So if you need a, I think. Um, and it looks a little bit, it's more, a little bit more legit when it's on the legal side.
I like, I like the legal.
Yes, and Lori Dry was very kind to pull this all together. So these are just. Some preliminary things that we pulled out when we were looking at the raw data, which I shared with everybody today. So hopefully you have it if you want to look at it. Uh, as, as you can see, we, you know, we had five hundred and twenty-one respondents and it kind of just looks, we pulled out the library mission statement from the bylaws. Um, we've put some quotes in there from survey respondents and. It, what our plan is from here is now to move forward into a full packet. Um, which will show every question, the response to every question, have an introduction as to. How we did it, um, how many people responded, who was involved, um. And then, and then kind of at the end, hopefully have some recommendations. Uh, for steps forward based on what we've seen, uh, from the respondents.
That's great. What's the tops?
For the one man, you share this out or is this?
Oh yeah, it's going to be shared out.
Carolyn, in this section, there's like ten percent without having the top left, like an explanation for that. I'm just curious.
Oh, yeah.
What keeps you coming back to, oh, ten percent events and programs?
Oh, no, directly to the right.
Oh yeah, I don't know. That's a good catch. Check that one out.
Ten percent of like.
Yes, it's just what it.
Thank you for catching that.
Excuse us, Lauren.
I just said, thank you for catching that. I will fix it.
Oh, do you know what it is? I'm just curious.
It is.
I think it's building.
I believe it is building.
Yeah. Surprisingly, mentioned many times that they, they like coming back to live because like. But there's different ways of seeing.
Thank you for including the mission.
Yes, well, that's important.
Yeah, I feel like it's important to see.
Um, this is a, this is a beautifully put together.
Yeah, that's great. Well, it's a, and it's a.
Thank you so much. Uh, thank you for the collaborative effort, um, that the committee has put together.
Worked very hard on it as well.
Thank you to everybody. Seriously, this is, uh, it's beautiful. I think it gives us a lot of valuable information. Um, thank you also for sharing with me the raw data. That was, that was a lot of fun to parse through, so.
Interesting comments in there.
It was a long weekend.
Yes, there were, um.
Yeah, it was, I mean, it was, it was a fair amount of work to go through those open-ended ones.
You and the committee have been working on this since, um, June, I think is when we.
No, it started in April. So we've been.
We've been collecting the data since. Since.
Yes, since.
Late July, actually. It's when we cut off of it. So thank you for, thank you for eight solid months bringing us here. It's well worth it.
Interesting. And it is in our long-term plan that we do this on a regular basis. As I say, how often is this going to happen though?
Well, in the long range plan, it says that we do yearly. I think yearly is too much myself, because I think we will just. But I think there's other ways we can do surveys. It doesn't have to necessarily be to the public like that. I think we could do. More focus groups or going out to meet community leaders and surveying them, uh, what their needs are. So I, there's different ways. I think we can do the same thing. And get different information, but I would not recommend that we do a, a full out community survey like we did in this.
Especially, especially with the amount of time and effort that it takes, I think.
Yeah, yeah, but also.
We could probably conduct something like this every five years.
I think it would just learn people out to.
And maybe it's, maybe it's a rotating spectrums, community.
Right.
Community leaders, local businesses, and maybe.
Right. Right, we, and we can address that in the outreach to figure out. And then bring that recommendation back to the board.
So anything, was there anything that like jumped, jumped? Oh, sorry, Lori, what was that?
No, that's okay. I just wanted to update you. It actually is not building. It is habit or convenience. That is what that ten percent is.
Habit or convenience.
Yes.
I love it.
Thank you so much, Lauren. Was there anything, um, that jumped out to you or the committee as surprising at all? I'm also just kind of curious.
I would not, no, no, I mean, it, not surprising, but, um. Validating and then the staff was always mentioned very favorably, um, you know. I was surprised a little bit that people mentioned the building as frequently as they did. Um, but other than that, no, I, you know, well, books, I mean, everybody said books. You know, you don't, you don't think that, you know, I mean, people start to think that, that they don't, but you know. But it is books, you know, so.
Yeah, I had the, um, longer written out questions. And so it was interesting how. It was building for some of the quicker responses that you're just hitting a box. And for me, it wasn't the building per se, it was a third space. So, so it was more about place to relax, a place of refuge, you know, just sort of, yeah, exactly. So it, so it was some things like that. And what I thought was interesting was that I might've had a perception that, you know. Say books weren't important and the building was. And then once I put all the data together, because I was, you know, aware of it as I was playing around with it. But then when I put it in their categories, I went, oh my gosh, this was so much more than what I had thought as I was just sort of like not paying attention. So just kind of. Yeah, so we'll have, you know, more to come on that and it'll be a lot easier to.
And third space was mentioned a lot in, in, like some people say, I knew it was really gratifying to see some people say, you know. It's like, the only person I speak to one day, you know, I mean, those kinds of comments were really.
Yeah, and I want to say we had less than half a dozen like negative stuff. It was, it was like just.
One always comes to mind.
Well, yeah, sure, exactly. So anyway, so that was kind of, kind of interesting that there, there. But ultimately we found more people to, that did the survey that. Use the library. So we do need to target people who don't use the library and find out how. So that's sort of a different. Way of going at, so we could do the community partner and possibly find that businesses, find that.
Right.
Or whatever, but that would mean the questions have to be specific to that in some way.
And like actually be, like some of the places we just went and left. Footmarks and then, you know, you want to, but maybe get ourselves to those places and stay there for a day.
Right, exactly.
As people come through, like you need a house or Joseph's house or something like that, and, and actually have conversations with them.
Well, thank you all for your work. Um, I look forward to the rest of it coming out. Um, and this is tremendous as it is now. So thank you so much. And thank you to the entire outreach committee, um, for your hard work and collaboration. So.
Can I ask, uh, so the findings that came out of the survey. Is there like a summary of actions? Like how did the findings inform the things that we're then doing?
That's, that's the next step that we're, that's what we're working on, you know, and we're looking at it not only like long-term, but kind of short-term. Because these are some things that people mentioned that are pretty easy for us to kind of address right now. And then these are the things that are going to take us. A little bit longer. So that is definitely, that's the, the next step.
Okay.
And again, we'll bring those recommendations back to the board.
Sounds like I'll be there.
It's right. So get on that.
Spreadsheet.
Thank you so much. Um, any other old new business person communicated you had?
I, I did mention, uh, thank you. I just wanted to let folks know that we are. Approaching, hopefully going out to bid for the, uh, HVAC project soon.
I know, sorry, I mean, we missed, um, the date, which was, uh, originally. Yeah, it was like the last two weeks of September. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so there's, I think the contracts are under review by our lawyers now for, make sure they're comfortable with what goes out to bid. In conjunction with that, uh, we started to reach out to a couple of folks to act as a clerk of the works. On the library's behalf, who be representatives of the library through this process, uh. To not, to reduce the burden that would fall on Christian or the director. Doing that in the process. And so, um. Identified a couple of people, expressed interest, uh, we've not yet scheduled times to get together with them. So we need to schedule time to get together with, review what's involved, uh. Talk about what the, uh, steps forward would be and. Come back with a recommendation, I think, to. Actually, is this a hiring thing that you do or is it something that we come as the recommendation to the board?
Yeah, it's a part-time contract.
Uh, because there's a building committee, um, and I'm interim. This is one of those things that under normal circumstances, it might be one way, but we can certainly.
I certainly won't, I'm having to participate in that, but does it need to come to the board as a. Hiring? No, it comes in.
No, because you're not hiring anybody, you're contracting with them, but.
Let's just simply acknowledge it, um, so I'm thinking that.
To share with you on that next month.
Well, that's very exciting, um. Yeah, please, please, and please excuse me interrupting you and originally, um, but I did have one question, um. And it was, sorry, I think it was that we would be paying the clerk of the works, obviously like an hourly rate for the work, um. And. Would they, would they be an independent contractor or would they be an employee of the library?
And that comes with a grant, right? Doesn't the grant cover them? Okay.
Be funded out of the grant.
Okay.
Do we want to talk about the crime and multi-crime?
I'm happy to, if, if there's a question on it.
But I mean, so essentially we had a deadline, um, for going to bid. And then there was a reevaluation and realized that we, instead of having one in, um. General contractor, we needed to go to multi. So then that's sort of what caused this a bit of delay.
That's.
And for us to now look for a clerk of the works.
Before I say more on that.
I. I don't know. I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
What portions are getting contracted out? Why?
So it's electrical.
Okay.
We can't elect funding and GC, although I think there will be a cheap. I'm. Not quite sure why it didn't come out of multi-prime contract to begin with.
Right.
I assume it was our lawyers who reviewed it and said, hey, it's just not multi-prime, it should be. So. I did not direct them to make any changes to their contract.
No.
We were informed after having received the draft of the contracts. After a period of time, they came back and said, hey, don't review that. We're going to change this. It needs to be multi-prime. I, had you reached out to them at all to let them know there was a concern or had our lawyers reach out to them?
No.
So.
So it was just something that.
They apparently realized internally that. If inadvertently not. Finalized the documents.
Interesting. So ultimately we were going to start in January anyway, and you know, it'll be maybe somewhat delayed. But if I recall, they were not going to be done until October. So there was no chance of having the HVAC in place for this summer anyway. You know. I don't know how much it'll delay it or whatever, but.
Hopefully if it's just expanding the subcontracting, subcontracting, subcontracting that Titan will be doing, that's. Probably, I mentioned this relatively straightforward, so I imagine we'll get a contract back by November later. I'd be shocked if it was, was. Bad by even, so, but I'm.
On separate projects.
Yeah, this is not the roof, it's the HVAC.
Gotcha. Excuse me, yeah.
Yeah, the Titan's still in the works. As far as I know, we're still a go. We just haven't heard back, um.
I gotta have your spreadsheet up at like all times. But thank you.
It's still the same law firm you're dealing with, it's White, right?
It, yeah, so yeah, we have a specific council and they have a couple of things right now that they're looking at for, so three things.
Are there standard contracts that are pulled for projects like this?
There are basic standard forms, but they need to be. Developed and articulated and then there are amendments to those forms. Um, the contracts for both the roofing project and. The draft contracts that have been prepared for the, um, HVAC project. Are based on the AIA documents, the American Institute of Architects, that will suite of documents that are. Used for contract, uh, for design services as well as construction administration.
I ask you questions about that another time, so we don't.
You know, if we get together for lunch, we could do it, um, whenever it's convenient.
I would like to understand, um, which portion can be picked up and transferred versus which portion is like a distinct scope rate? That way in the future, it's, doesn't cause a potential delay, which it sounds like it's on their end and I'm happy that they caught it, but. Right.
And there are different architectural firms involved with the two projects, so. Pat has been doing the roofing project, um. Alan Riley Wilson has been doing the HVAC project to date.
Thank you.
Kirsten, thank you for the update. Thank you. Um, do we have any new, any more new old business?
You said that you wanted to talk about this special meeting.
Yes, would you like to, would you like to lead that discussion?
I'm gonna.
Sure.
I guess we should schedule a, a special meeting after we had a chance to talk, uh, whenever that might be. You had concerns?
No, it sounded like you wanted to go, you, it sounded like you guys wanted to go through things a little bit more in detail, so. I would love to just be a fly on wall. Yeah. Is that a separate meeting that the two of you are going to have or is it a special meeting?
Oh, I think.
I think the, there was a, a meeting that we were going to have.
Okay.
At Christian's suggestion, and then it would be a special meeting with the board in order to approve budget changes.
Finance committee before meeting with the board? Would there need to be a special meeting of the finance committee before meeting with the board?
I think that, I think that is my question. I believe that's probably yes. Um, so. I wanted to ask you, Marie, um, if we're planning on having that conversation with Christine soon, um, if not. Then, well, if so, I can schedule a ad hoc meeting, um, to the whole board, especially the finance committee. Um, after the fact to discuss line items, you think we may need to reevaluate, reappropriate, um, to ensure our. Uh, fiscal completion of the year.
I, you know, we haven't, it was just proposed tonight, so we haven't had a chance to talk about when it might occur.
When, whenever, whenever the two of you have a firm date, I'd be happy to. Please let me know. I will set something up when it is convenient perfectly.
That sounds great. What's the? Does it? The bookkeeper? Which is outstanding and non-existent for the moment, correct? Does it make sense to have, when the two of you meet, that person in the room too, or no?
No, uh, not at this time. So I developed a form. That had all of our budget line items and then all like the expenses that line up with that. We just set up a different, separate column so that we knew for some things like with programming. That if we were getting X amount of dollars from the art center or the friends or what have you. Then then we were able in one way to look at the fact that we're not actually over budget on that line item. Because of the way that the expend, the revenue was in one area and expenses are in another. Um, so it's those things that we all need to look at, but then also, you know, make some assessments on say with. Um, our IT support, we've gone over budget with them. A lot of it had to do with the fact that with the closing of the Lansingburg branch. He then was here setting up all the equipment and things like that for people to continue to do work. So that was extra cost that we didn't budget for. So we've, uh, mitigated some of that by having them work mostly at home as opposed to coming in all the time, but. You know, with the average of what we need to pay, how much are we gonna need in this line item and this line item, and then where are things already paid? That we know we won't have any invoices in twenty-four, that we can take those extra funds and like move them in different areas and then make a recommendation to the board. Um, I think under normal circumstances, the library director would go ahead and just do that, but I think, you know, with all the changes and everything and the fact that you're all fiscally responsible. That it's a good idea to make sure that you know what's happening and how it's happening, that the adjustments are in place.
I agree, yeah.
And is there um? Documentation of the budget items? And changes that were made over time, and I'm thinking more with the switch of the bookkeeper coming in and the potential quick books maybe next year and the director. Is there any documentation from Joy that you've seen that? Details. What line items? Were covered for what things, so that historically that can be reviewed by the board or by.
There haven't been any changes because we had a budget and Marie brought this to our attention in July saying, look, some of these line items are getting close. And we really need to consider it, but I had just come on board in July, so I said in the fall, it would probably be a good time, here we are in the fall, certainly didn't expect that the business manager would be leaving. So now it's just a question of me diving a little bit more deeply and working with Marie, you know, based on her knowledge and. And stuff on, on where we might need to go, so.
So it's not big business or new classifications, okay?
No, it's not new classifications, it's just being able to sort of put it in a different way, so we can see it a little bit more clearly.
When I asked Joy how she decided where items, uh, expenses would go. She said she would ask the director.
Is there a file?
So, so there are, I don't, I haven't seen anything like, say, a journal entry, I'm taking this and I'm moving it over there as it relates to the budget. So we do that as it relates to the investment to the operating account, definitely, because we're constantly moving money to make sure we're covering payroll. We're constantly moving money to make sure we're covering expenses, so that's been done, but I don't, I don't get the sense, and I. Don't, I think Joy would have brought it to my attention that we've moved money in the budget, and usually I think Paul would do it at the end of the year, realizing, you know, where we are in relation to. Where we should be or, you know, how to do things, I do know that the staff has informed me that sometimes Paul would say, okay, we're not ordering extra books anymore, we're just ordering. The most popular, um, because oftentimes he would take materials or services as the sort of, I don't wanna say slush fund, but the place where. Um, you can use to adjust things.
And. I'll say something that has brought a lot of complaints. To me, uh, previously, but in the past, we've had a lot of vacancies. That we aren't having now, which I, and I'm fully aware that this is a, a. A good thing that we get much more value. Than we used to, but it meant that there was money that was left.
Right.
Uh, as a flexibility that doesn't exist anymore, and that's why. I feel we have to look more closely at the budget.
And I would recommend that you have an equipment line item and that that's the funds for, not salaries and employees. Because if you need to be able to run your company, you're gonna need the people, but if you feel like you need some fund that has some flexibility. You definitely don't want it to be books and services, but equipment, you might be able to say, you know what, we don't need that computer until next year. And that might be a, a line item that has some adjustment to it, so, and especially if you know you're gonna have to order, you know, a few each year, you know, to. Keep up with the times, but.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying that it's necessarily a good thing, it, it's just a fact that this was excess funds that we would have left over at the end of the year because of the vacancies. That, and we have to be more cau- conscious or cautious now. Because we don't have that anymore, we have to recognize that our budget is tighter as a result.
Sure.
Well, you're also waiting for outstanding payments from the city.
Right.
And that's a bigger question, that's a serious one.
And, and that's almost. Separate from the operating budget, I mean, because it, those are more the construction projects that we're waiting for money from the city.
But yes, I realize it's two buckets, but yes.
So one of the issues with paying IT is that there's constant refurbishing of old equipment. And if we actually had a line item for equipment, we could have modern equipment that we could then not necessarily pay the IT so much except for the. Regular maintenance stuff, and we'd be able to, you know, be able to have, you know. Things that are working a lot more efficiently and, you know. Anyway, so that's why I said I, you know, in order to have someplace that gives you some flexibility. Not the salary line, but maybe an equipment line because you can decide. You know, they don't. Some things do just break down and that's it, but it, you know.
How is depreciation handled? For equipment right now?
Excellent question, I cannot tell you. I'm sure it's in the system. But I can't tell you, I, I think, I think we own our photocopy machines, uh, which means we have no contract, which means if they go, we're gonna have to pay for someone to service them. Which means that they're gonna ask us to do a contract, which is identical to renting a machine, so when we hit that, we're, that's just something that's gonna happen. So that's because I don't, I don't see an invoice that we've paid for rental. For RICO, so, so um, most offices don't actually purchase their photocopy machines because it's the same contract. And you might as well do that, and you get toner with it sometimes, and all these other things, which now we're paying for so much toner, especially for the printers. And what have you, and it's not that we're elaborate, you know, with our. Printing and stuff, it's just, it's the volume, it's the older machines, it's not being able to, you know, spew out more copies per toner, but of course, all the equipment now, it's. The equipment's cheap, the toner's more expensive. You know, it's just, there's that adjustment, so there's, you know, stuff in there, but I, you know, I don't know about the depreciation.
This is all, um. Very, very much worth considering, um, once we have a, once we, well, a bookkeeper, um, and a director in consideration for a twenty twenty-six budget, absolutely, so.
I'm sure the word depreciation comes up when the auditors do their report.
It does, and we have that, I mean, we're.
So we certainly provide you with the audit.
Yes.
And that's gonna get into really smart decisions around, are we leasing or buying where, and you have a lot of equipment in this building.
So, yeah. And, and rightly so.
I had to, I had to fix a photocopier wants to work. So, just wanna say that, that's all.
Little pieces that might break, yes.
Thank you, Marie, um, sorry, I know we got a little off track, uh, discussing various nuances, um, but, um, after you, like, Chrissy Ann, um, sit down, um. Again, just to reiterate, I'd be happy to discuss a. Um, an ad hoc treasury committee that we would invite to the whole board, um, just to make sure that we're on top of this, so I don't want this to wait until next month, so. Ideally in the next two weeks, so, um. So thank you, thank you for bringing that to the board's attention. Um. Do we have any other new, new business?
I just wanted to follow up, and I apologize if I missed this, about the reimbursement from Michael for travel. Set up and sent, how will we?
Give us a bill that was approved.
Okay. And the way that the check hasn't run yet, but it will be run and it will go out.
Okay. So do I send you the savings?
Uh, I don't know if it was already given to us, but if not.
Because I'm the one that's in communication with them, so it's fine.
Yeah, send me his address so that I can make sure it prints out on the check, unless you want me to give it to you and you wanna write a note. Happy to do that, and.
I'd rather not slow down the process for you. I will make sure you got the IDs, unless it was directly on the invoice, which is possible. Anyway, I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, there, uh, what was it, it was his travel thing, so it might have been on there, so Joy may put it in, if not, I'll make sure it is in, and if I need any information, I'll reach out, how's that?
Just to, before we, please. Yeah, it's not.
Should we set up, um? My goodness, I can't. Should we set up a follow-up meeting for the director search for next week, so that, because we have our final. And everybody in this room is involved in it, so it'd be easier to set up the meeting now than try to do it via email, so that we can. Kind of get an idea of how people feel about the three candidates and move forward as quickly as possible.
Yeah.
Sorry, I missed mine.
And also, the board has reserved the art gallery tomorrow for an extended amount of time, was that for a candidate?
Oh, that, that was for a candidate.
Okay, so we could release that, great, yeah, I just, I know the abatement was coming and I was like, no. So.
Okay, if someone shows up tomorrow and expects an interview. Send them a.
Okay.
Have them call me and I'll work down here in panic.
A lot of us are in mouth, but all.
Um, do we, do we wanna schedule the live, or do we wanna wait until we conclude?
I've.
Got a cap of money.
I just want us to do before we leave this room, so I don't, it doesn't matter to you whether we do it during the meeting or.
Or, or whatever.
I'm happy to do it right now. I don't know if everyone has Monday off, but I do. So. But I would be. Tuesday?
Please stop putting things on Tuesday.
Probably ask Karen on Tuesday.
Yeah. Handbook training.
Wednesday.
The handbook will be, um, sorry to interrupt, but the handbook will be recorded if you need to watch. It's.
Understood, it sounds like we're doing.
Thank you, Ellen. So that should stop us from doing the.
I can do Wednesday the sixteenth at six o'clock, that's my only availability that entire week.
Works for me.
Works for me. I will, oh, I'll send out an invite to everybody.
You will also need to reach out to the reference, Troy referenced to book, um. The space for that.
I'm actually not available for that, so we can try to make for the next week.
I can, is there any way to go any earlier than six?
I have an appointment at five, so.
Uh, we always report on Zoom.
Yeah.
So, do you want some bad comments? Um, I'll see what I can do, it's fine, um, but since I understand, so the, this is just a debrief. Well.
I don't know, is it?
I mean, like, yeah, I would like to understand, yeah, the context.
What's the process, are we narrow, do you narrow for us?
Thirty-six years that they've had to find a director.
My guess is, my hope would be that we would come out of that meeting with an idea of who we were making the operative. And a plan to. To, to, uh. Check their references, that's, I was getting into it.
That's a great question, reference check, yeah.
So, uh, that would be my, that's how I. That's what I think.
I agree with that, yeah.
Don't do that, let me see what I can. Well, let's schedule, well, I.
Well, at least we can do this five forty-five anyways, I get for market five twenty-nine.
So it doesn't make a difference, so do six and then I'll see what I can do. Rather than hold it, yeah.
But if you wanna. Please send like an extensive, whatever you have.
No, I know, I'll make a plan either way, yeah, there are no worries, but I just, yeah.
Right, um, I will send out a tentative invitation to everyone this evening, just so it's on everyone's calendars. For the, for the follow-up, uh, director search committee meeting, um, debrief and next steps.
Thank you.
Right, um, any final word on older new business?
Uh, yes. The core training that we're doing, uh, I think there was a mention, there are a couple of people that haven't done some of those trains before, and I know that there's the option to have Tim at UHLS do a training for the board. Um, for some of the topics, my question is that something that we would want to do as a group and offer as an optional in-person. Um, board training, there were some great topics that. Are on that list.
What, twelve bit, finance? That's what I'm saying, it might be a good one for us to ask.
I've done it online, but we've never had.
I've only done it online, too, yeah, so.
I think I had a.
We, would you be interested in talking to Tim and scheduling that?
I've never talked to Tim, I'm happy.
Tim is a wonderful gentleman. Who is more than happy to help in our pursuit of running a good library.
So are we looking for like a two-day, like ten hours per day, just stacked back to back?
I have nothing in me right now.
And maybe like a one hour a month optional for a couple.
What they normally do, um, and it can fit or not fit, since we have finance committee before this, but usually you do an abbreviated meeting and then they'll. Complete that same. Day, so that way it's about the same time you normally have a meeting, but. You can decide how you wanna do it.
The things, with the things we have hanging on, I definitely wonder about our ability to have an abbreviated meeting at least in this calendar year, maybe, maybe next year.
Well, if everybody is on the. Admin, or is it search?
Everyone's on the search.
Also, Ellen, do we ever, does this report, like, set up doodles for things, so that we can like actually look through our calendars and, or does everything need to be decided and then a running meeting?
That would be, that would be great, I would, I would love.
Okay, yeah, so we could bring that practice, then I can make sure that we're all.
Joy has taken past care of that for us in the past.
Well, now that you're secretary. That's right, I was wondering that, do we have to vote on all these?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
We had nominations, we haven't had any elections yet.
Oh, goodness.
Passing like Mission Impossible notes to me, I'm like, what's gonna happen, is the place gonna blow up, like?
I thought the same thing.
Okay, how about, how about this? How about this, um, one, thank you all for your patience, um, I'm obviously gonna stumble a little bit as we go through this, um, it's very funny. The FBI is about to, gonna cart me off, uh, assuming, assuming duties that weren't afforded to me through a fair and free election, um. How about our last piece of new business, barring, barring any other pressing matters we have, how about we actually have that election real quick?
Yeah.
All right, um.
Shall I make a motion?
Yes.
Sure.
I move that we accept the nominated slate. Of officers as. Officers of the board.
Any, any discussion? All right, all in favor? I motioned unanimously. All right, the Hans regime begins now. At least how I deal with being nervous.
Wait for that last minute and be like, oh, I was thinking board president.
I wish I had.
But, but listen, the ten-hour, the ten-hour back-to-back trainings already got me, so.
Yeah, that, that'd be a sort of a. A detraction from the potential, potential run there.
All right, um. Second, second last item on our regular agenda, anyone receiving any community feedback that they would like to share with the? With the board of course.
I do.
Oh, not yet, sorry, next, next item.
Um, I have a. Well, I guess not a city official, someone that ran for office locally who has constituents and, I guess, constituents, they didn't become city council, but, um. They had complaints about the process for the vote. And had a number of people asking questions, so I just wanted to reiterate that. Uh, it did get brought up, they were collecting notes, they wanted to understand it, and they're going to be watching next year. Okay.
All right, well, do you know that, thank you, um, hopefully, hopefully, um, if and when you had those conversations, uh, you can relay the fact that we have discussed it, um, and we will be taking action on it to. Uh, ensure mistakes are upheld, everyone is properly trained to run an election, um, and. Our public image is maintained.
They want public communication is the main thing, what is the process, how does it happen, and just transparency of it, so.
Yeah, we have more than we have in the past.
Awesome. Oh, that's the big one, yeah, that's a good point.
I think we have, we talked about this, we have to render me that, so that those. You know, it actually goes where it needs to go, it's not the individual. Four emails, not to my knowledge, um, but it is the. One that every, the shared one, I don't, I don't. Yeah, I'm still on board.
Yeah, um, I did access it this weekend, I think, and cleaned it up, it had like over three hundred just garbage. And narrowed it down to eleven actual items, I can't recall if I. Responded. To them, but I think I did, but I can't recall, so I'll go back and.
If it's going to the board though, shouldn't it be the president of the board who's checking the email? Not you, I mean, it should, it shouldn't fall onto your responsibility.
I, yes, I'm happy to transition.
I'm sure we are. I'm sure you are.
It was just because Joy was the one who was supposed to be checking it and it was true, like it really, there was no. There was very little interaction on it and stuff. So I forwarded things to different departments because I was like, oh, did this happen? Did somebody, you know, whatever? People came back and said, yeah, I did that in February, but there was no, so it must have been a communication that could have gone to two different places or something, but.
I'll follow up with you just so.
Yeah, I'm happy to relinquish the.
Yeah.
I have like seven. That's a little weird thing.
And then if something came through there, you would have that, you're right.
And I did unsubscribe from a lot of rubbish, so that'll help.
Thank you for doing more than.
Well, I just was like, I'm worried, I'm just gonna, it was my, you know. Thing to do, so my mind doesn't have to work anymore, so.
Alright, um, any other community feedback? I, I received congratulations for a successful election, so that's all I, that is all I heard.
And, and heard several comments about, or, uh, people interest, expressing interest in the election and, uh.
We have several people saying we can ask for more money. You should have asked for more money. They might be related to people that are at this table. I can't confirm or deny, but, um.
I have one person saying, don't ask for any money ever.
Well, you're gonna reset those.
Yeah, sorry. Some positive feedback. People did also say they're really looking forward to Fall Fest.
Oh, very nice.
A lot of people are, it's nice to see that it's becoming an annual.
Oh, I agree. I'm excited to see the scarecrows everywhere again. Alright, um.
Can we just make a note, it's exciting that the city issued a public apology.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Yes.
I did appreciate that.
Yeah, we didn't get any at either location, anybody thinking that there was anything with the library. Most of the people, well, they called the city, so I think they must have gotten enough calls and I know that some board members had reached out as well, so.
Yes, I'm glad, I'm glad they, uh, I'm glad they found up to that. I think it was important just for the, honestly, the sanctity of running their government, so. But, uh, mistakes happen, obviously, um, fortunately, the folks at the control's office, um. Handle it fairly gracefully with everyone they contacted with and it didn't blow up into an issue, um, that we needed to deal with. Um, and Marie, I thank you for originally bringing that to our attention the other week. Thank you so much. Alright, any other community feedback? Uh, I'm not, not shocked that we had a lot. We were very much in the community this past month, so.
There was concern that I heard that, um, that the working families party endorsed, uh, seemed to endorse. The, some of the candidates and it, it, um, people were concerned that, um. Since the library was not a partisan, a partisan election. Um, that there be a political party that was involved, even though the, the things that were posted. From working families said that it wasn't a partisan thing. It was, um, the weighing in of the working families. Party, um, that I heard about. This was the first time that had happened in. Any election that I've known about since I've been involved with the library, way before I was involved with the friends.
Thank you, Fred. Do you have any other public comment? Another transition of that?
Now I'm public, now I can talk about.
You kicked it off.
I just want to clarify, I don't want to belabor this election, but I want to clarify some points about. There is overlap between the League of Women Voters and the Friends. Particularly, I think there are only three of us. But, um, I've been doing the election at Lansingburg with Judy Meyer, who was president, I believe. For like six years now. And, um, and it was because, uh, we recognized that there was. That people came to us in the first half hour and was not on the list, that we knew that something was wrong. And we did not say, as you said, Alex, that they were not registered voters. We said they were not on the list. And that's what alerted people to the fact that the list hadn't been sorted. Uh, only four people, uh, filled out provisional ballots. So as an issue, even though it felt awful, you know, it felt awful at the time. Ashley was there, you know, it, it felt terrible that we knew people should be on the list and they weren't on the list. It felt awful, but it was also the thing that caused the alarm to go off and say, there's something wrong with this list. And so it got re- resolved remarkably fast, remarkably fast. And only four people had to fill out provisional ballots and there was a mechanism in place. To dealing with the fact that people weren't. Um, so, you know, I, I understand that you think that, uh. It doesn't look like that the president of the Friends is doing, um, uh, but I am a citizen of this. And I am a volunteer and I've been volunteering in this way for the vote for six years now. And, um, you know, it just. You know, it, it feels, it feels bad that, you know, I'm feeling that there is something sticky about this relationship. So I, I just.
Thank you, Fred. Um, do we have any other public comment? That one.
Um, again, also not to belabor the election issues, but I know there's this other organization too about it. Uh, to those of you who may not know, we think that the board of elections is a, a better way to go about it. I just want to remind people that the first time this library went out for an election, the board of elections ran it. And to dilettaries results, um, where things went down, just to keep that in everyone's mind. To it has been said that it is true, the League of Women Voters do conduct this election for many other libraries. Many of them run very smoothly and maybe that, looking at how they train. Or how the league in general or different committees train their volunteers might be something to look at. Uh, we have to remember that the person who is running it now is this, this person is second year of doing it at the library. It was so important to get for many, many years, uh, who knew the chapter and verse and might have to. See if he needs anywhere training to, uh, this is the first time that this director did, uh, this election. And next year, it will be the first time for your new director. So, tho- those are some things to look at, how the league's trained, how, uh, the board is trained, how the library itself is trained. Uh, maybe there's some thought, if you absolutely need to eliminate any thought of perception. Um, that there might be some more cross-overs between different parts of the league. I know there are three people who've already, on their election, maybe some people from there came on here to, not to puke anyone. But again, sometimes it is not the. Understanding is that there is no lack of integrity, but you don't want the perception that there might be. Uh, the other thing is, a couple of years ago, uh, the situation where a board member gets sent with the league upstairs. It, it, acting board member considering upstairs, um, just told it was an issue and. Also again, said that they had the right to stay there, permission to stay there. Um, by the next year, Margaret Story, who was running the. Leagues, uh, she was their point person came and they gave this chapter and verse. That the board member, the acting board member who comes in to vote, comes in, votes, leaves. They come in, vote and leave. They are not supposed to stay. They are not supposed to in any way look like they're campaigning. And it was made very, very clear. And you might want to put this on your agenda for September or for August. Uh, that you have, and hopefully at that time, whoever is the key player for the league in this election. Will know all the little pieces and parts and parts of their puzzle, come in and have a talk with the board too about. And that way, everybody is on the same page, knowing what they can and cannot do to be respectful of the election. Also, knowing how many people came this year, I understand there was some question about the number of ballots that's. Probably other, other locations way out of ballots. You may want to use the number that occurred this year as an idea of overprint. It is better to overprint than to underprint. You can always use it for, you know, for scrap paper at the reference desk at some point. Uh, so again, when you're debriefing and you're going through your next meeting of, of carefully looking at that, look at all those details. And come up with solutions to each of those pieces.
Thank you, Evelyn.
We, uh, is okay to comment on public comment engagement? I want to say thank you because I, I think that's important to just acknowledge that, is that okay? So I just want to say thank you for, for bringing that up and being the head of the friends, um, and. I think that it's important in the future to have more clarity in communication. So some of the issues that we're bringing up are not a point of finger at someone and I want you to not feel too much on a personal level. It is gonna be personal because right now you're the person that was there. But I think that there's communication needed because I know that as a candidate, I had no idea what was happening about the process. I didn't know what the rules were for electioneering or not, right? I'm a pretty, I think. Aware person, so I knew I shouldn't probably hang out in the building, but nobody told me that, right? Nobody made that clear. So I did contact the league and asked what the rules were in advance and so we shared that information, but we had to seek that out on our own. And I wish that as a candidate, I didn't have to because nobody wants to be getting in trouble or unaware of the process. So I think that, and this is, you're brand new to this. I think there's changes happening. It's nice to know that on the league side, there's some changes happening as well. Let's get that documented, plantation in place, because I don't want someone to feel the way that I did or the way that you feel or the way that your family felt when they showed up and weren't. Had to do a provisional ballot. So I think that's the point, right? In the future, there won't be that frustration from literally everybody, uh, because it was a lot of time and effort and everyone did a great job. Um, so just wanted to say thank you for bringing up those points. Let's get them documented and let's not do this again next year.
Agree completely.
Just to say too, that it's, you know, while we have questions, like, because it's already been brought up now that it's my family. That part of where many of the other questions or speculation came from the fact that the next person who. Came and was not on the list is a sitting council member. And so where these things can be kind of flamed.
Right.
Around town without whether or not we're doing things properly is, could very well also be coming from this other person.
It was very embarrassing. It was, it was terribly, you know, um, and it, uh. And it's not, and the fact that, I mean, I couldn't hear all of it. It's very hard to hear, uh, when you talk, um. In this meeting, besides having hearing issues, it's very hard. But what, um, uh, Christiane talked about. In terms of, 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 uh, doing better by the whole process is very important to it. Because it, it seems like the responsibility for the league, the list is neither the board of elections. But the library and it was, it's the library who, who presents the list to the league. Who does the, does the, uh, the actual finding people on the list. And, um, and it, it wasn't a problem here. It was a problem in Lansing.
It was a problem here as well.
It was a problem.
Yeah, it was in both locations.
Yeah, but anyway, the reforms that you all have talked about are right on the money. I mean, they're, they're really right on the money. And, you know, I'm sorry to feel so defensive, but it was horrible to be in that spot. I mean, it was because we knew that it was wrong. And, you know, in this day when people are talking about voter fraud, to be, to feel like somehow. People were seeing us as an instrument of voter fraud was just horrible. It was horrible.
I think, um, just going forward, um, especially as, you know, when we approach the next election, um, we can work more closely together, um, to disseminate information. And train everybody, I'm.
That's actually.
No, I mean, I know Albany does an excellent job. They did an excellent job last year. They did informational meetings for anybody interested in being a candidate. So they laid out all those rules. This is what you can do. This is what you can't do. This is what you would do when you become a trustee. And they had, how many people did they have? Like twelve people running for three spots or something? I mean, I think it's something we can take. Real.
A committee sounds nice because then it becomes public and the people who have concerns come to the committee.
I agree. Um, I think that's, that's something.
And, yeah, and I would say too, to the comment and question about working families, probably you should reach out to them.
Yeah.
From the league. I think that's an issue. It is, there are no rules on that.
Yeah.
Uh, all candidates were asked, um, all candidates running were asked. So.
But you are the person who brought up the concern and so I would, I would make sure that that person knows that that's something they should do. Is to reach out to them about why they'd like to get involved in, uh, library board elections and the same way that they, um, established these, their involvement in school board elections. Which are also in Congress. But I think it's a great question to ask.
All that, all the candidates man and guest, behind our ways, one, two candidates who said, thank you very much. The offer, however, we are non-partisan, apolitical entity and, um. Will not be, uh, looking for endorsement from any party because that is the integrity of this election.
I'm happy to amplify it from any party. I'm happy to have, anyone that wants to amplify the library, go for it. If, not that a Republican wanted to endorse me or a Democrat, I don't know, but if they did, I probably would say no.
Well, the difference between endorsing me, endorsement and amplifying the same as an election.
Yeah.
So for instance, we can inform like dates and things, but we cannot ask for money. And there was one point where I put something in from ALA or whatever and then I had to pull it back or not ALA, Nyla. You know, whatever. And so there, there are certain things that the municipality can't do, so as representation of the municipality, it has sort of those. But I think information sections and things like that will be helpful. Obviously, what we provided to you was some information. But I can see that it was really not what was needed in order to, you know, sort of put things in place and pieces and all that.
I'm gonna turn on my big fan right now. We're gonna settle all the dust that's up there. Um, I think we, going forward, probably over the next couple of months, we will figure out, um, an ad hoc election committee who wants to represent that. Will interface with the friends. Um, we'll make sure everybody's on the same page.
Much like the, uh, ad hoc committee for outreach, that this also be open to public.
Oh, they all are, they all are.
Oh, okay. Well, or, or, sorry. It is, yes.
You're saying.
Because I think, again, if we're talking about transparency, I think anyone should have access.
Right, I think that's a great idea.
So just to let people know that if you book a meeting at the library, they all have to be open meetings. So that's just how we operate. And so obviously, when it comes to the board and sometimes having to go into executive session, that's a completely different thing. You know, and then the search committee would have that possibly the ad, ad administration committee, but generally the other committees wouldn't have executive session.
So I did have, um, community, uh, a public comment, sorry, um. Okay. So, uh, I also wanted to reiterate that Albany does their candidate info sessions really well. I know I was really kind of pushing for that last year. They do hold sessions ahead of time, months ahead of time before the candidates even have to decide. If they want to be a candidate or not. And they do it very well. They put it out there everywhere. It's, it's a big deal. So I would second that and, and ask them how they structure that and see what can work for us. Before you guys meet or bring that to a meeting. Um, and I know Albany is really good about sharing information if you ask. So, uh, thank you for drawing attention to that and certainly any feedback that you're giving is acknowledged and supported. Um, I did want to say formally, thank you to those that have, and congratulations to those that have been elected or re-elected. Um, looking forward to seeing what you can do on the board and how we can all work together. So, and to Evelyn and Keith, thank you for the time that you gave and we appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Virginia.
Thanks, Virginia.
Well.
Six o'clock.
Since our, uh, since our laptop is dying, uh. Next meeting is November twelfth, twenty twenty-four. We are rounding out twenty twenty-four, um. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Well, and I just want you to know, men's are winning, so if you're interested.
Well, listen, Bill's off this week, so I don't want to talk.